All right, we'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. Thanks for coming and we'll get started with my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all who's in favor? The motion to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all who's in favor? All right, first up for tonight is the Board of Ed acknowledgements. Does anybody on the board have anything? I'd like to share.
I'd like to say kudos to the high school and middle school for their open houses, for everybody staying late and all the hard work that went into that. I think it's a fantastic way for parents to come in and meet the teachers and a great opportunity. So, thank you for staying late and putting that together for us. Thank you.
Ben, you want to start us off tonight?
Sure. So, sorry, I was on athletics and activities and all that. So, we've been going about two weeks now with practices and competitions started last week. Everyone's been working really hard on doing their best and everything. Football plays tomorrow night, first home game against Ottawa. So, it'd be great to see everyone come out and support them and the hard work they've been doing. Couple of things, one to highlight, arcade clubs getting started up. Kids will start signing up on Wednesday during seminar and we'll start to do those type of things. We do have other clubs going on for students that aren't wanting to do anything education related. So, we had FCA, craft club, art club, and mouse pack, which is kind of that spirit club where kids will get together and be in the supervision of a staff member while they're waiting for the gates to open for our home game. And kids can go out and support their team and make some signs and really start cheering for everybody. So, looking forward to all the great athletics we have coming up in the month of September. So, we'd really love to see you guys come out. One other thing I want to highlight, our first volleyball game from last week. We had a huge crowd come out and packed the entire gym. So, that was an awesome thing to see and the girls really loved that to see her come out and support them.
Thank you.
Do I give you an ad?
Go for it.
So, a couple of things. So, I put in my board report, Heather Simons has a special group of seminar kids this year that are trying to do some things around the building. We've got a couple TVs in the building to just get some shout outs and different things that are going on. So, we have that going and it's really cool to see. They're getting ready to do a podcast as well. So, they're going around and starting to interview kids and teachers. So, excited to see what's going to come of that. And I also want to give a shout out to our eighth grade team because right now they're working on trying to do something a little bit different with seminar. To really focus on kids that maybe are struggling and missing assignments. And so, there's certain areas that they're required to attend and try to help those kids get that work turned in because obviously we're giving it because we wanted to do that. So, kind of excited about that as well. Just trying to do something a little bit different for them.
It hasn't been going for very long, but have you had a good?
Yes, but I mean, we've had a little bit of challenge, but it's been okay. Yes, yes. I think it's, I think it's going to be good. I really want to see us stick with it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, this could be friendly again. I missed August board meeting because we had a open house that night itself, which was well attended. Back before the couple nights, first day of school, good turnout with parents. And I want to report that our jump start was held July 28th through August 8th. It's kind of a, just that, a jump start to the school year. We had 51 students attend that. It was provided instruction by about eight teachers. And so, that was a good program to get those kids ready for the new school year. Our numbers as of, I think, today, kindergarten, we have 99 kindergarten students in seats. When just compared that to last year was 103. So, we're down a little bit. Overall, today, pre-K through second grade, we had 343 students at Cottonwood. Last year it was 360. So, we're getting down a little bit there. But win groups are starting up. They started up this week for instruction and they're going well and the rest of the year is off and running and having a good, good, good year. Preliminary data results, we did give some early basketball testing, a lot of different data from that. But one of the things that was very encouraging is that of our first grade students, so these were kindergartners last year, first grade this year, 76% of those students were considered lower, no risk on the work segmenting. So, really starting to get this foundation blocks for building the read. Compared to that, a couple years ago, we were about 40%. So, the numbers has increased quite a bit. So, we're encouraged by those results.
Thank you, Benny.
Yeah, things are just going great. We have our first BLT meeting, Building Leadership Team meeting tonight after school. So, can't believe it's already, you know, practically the middle of September. Like Cottonwood, we've started our win groups. We are doing something a little bit new this year, just win is what I need. And some of our fifth graders that are still in skill groups, Melinda Chapel and some of the inter-related teachers are starting a skills boot camp with them. So, we're going to see how that goes, just kind of putting them on the fast track to gain those skills. Panther clubs, we started our first Panther clubs last Friday. It was the first day. We had 26 different clubs that we were able to offer students, ranging from basketball to puzzles to Spiros, which were part of the endowment grant that Melinda and Cory received. And really, there's just something for everyone with Panther clubs. And it's really, truly one of the students' favorite things. Girls on the run has started, our school news has started. So, we've had two additions already. And yeah, things are just going great.
This week's the anniversary of 9/11. Our KAY club is planning some different stuff for Thursday, if 9/11 falls on. So, and then getting some stories from our staff members and then got some plans for some announcements. I'm looking forward to see what they put together for that. This last week, we had an informational meeting for our juniors and seniors that had entries in a tech school or junior college. And we had more than 20 students attend that. So, they were presented with a roadmap that talks about what next steps they should be doing while they're finishing their time off with us so that they can be ready to take the next step for one of those two things. And then we had a parent meeting last week for upperclassmen as well, who would have talked about similar information. And the feedback's been really positive for that as well. It is overwhelming with your first born when you think about how can I help you take the next step after you graduate. And so, I really appreciate our student services or counseling department going above and beyond to help with that because again, it's intimidating. Homecoming will take place before our next board meeting. So, I want to put that on your radar. That's scheduled for Friday, September the 26th. We'll do the parade at 1:30 in the afternoon, followed by what I always call the largest pepper alley in Miami County because there's nothing else like it. So, that's what I had.
That's what I left out, Cottonwood and Sunflower on your open houses. Thank you guys for putting those on. Jimmy?
Yeah, I was just going to mention this past weekend was the 10th year for the Step Strong race. And this was the final year of the race. So, out front, you'll see a check if you didn't have a chance to check that out. Check out the check. Take a look at that. That race has done a lot for community groups. In the past, several years, races supported SOS serving our students. This year, the final year was to beef up the endowment fund for their scholarship for Step Strong. And so, they also have $10,000 check for that. So, it's a great event. To come to a conclusion, but if you see any of Steph's family and friends or any of the event sponsors, you might give your appreciation and thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Jimmy. All right, we want to take a moment to recognize our employee of the month. We have two of them. Our first one is Heather Calk. Heather, you have been nominated by your peers, sorry, sorry, my apologies. You've been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Mrs. Calk has a warm and welcoming personality when she visits with families and students. My children have always felt she was someone they could trust. During class, Mrs. Calk is there for each student, no matter their academic achievement or academic level. So, congratulations. I'm going to do a cup. I mean, nobody takes a bad, right? You can't take that. You're so awesome. Oh, yes, I love that. And then our second one for award of the month of September is Danielle Grimes. You have been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Danielle works above and beyond keeping all activities for PHS up to date. Recently, she, excuse me, has also taken on other job responsibilities due to a staff shortage in the front office. She puts in many hours to ensure the students' activities are well planned, well-staffed, and organized. She plays a vital role and deserves to be recognized for her efforts and abilities. Thank you so much. A cup is a hot commodity. Congratulations. Thank you for all you girls do. Thank you, ladies, for your dedication to our district. All right, next on the agenda is information from Justin about the Patterson Family Grant.
Yes, thank you. So, just a quick update on Patterson Family Foundation. And I'll start with just a little bit of backstory of, you know, if you're not familiar, what is Patterson Family Foundation? Neil and Jeanne Patterson, at their passing, left a significant sum of money to their adult children to start a foundation with a mission of working together to help rural communities thrive. And the definition that they've established for rural is counties that have 50,000 or less in population, in Kansas and then western Missouri. And so, there are 95 Kansas counties currently are in their catchment area that have a population of under 50,000. So, that's all but 10 of the counties in Kansas. And then 24 Missouri counties also. And if you're not familiar with where the Patterson Family Foundation started, they were one of the founding members, the Pattersons of Cerner. And so, quite a bit of money that was there for the foundation to use. For example, in 2023, which is the last year, they have their annual report published, they donated or funded $51.3 million to those counties. And they go out in four areas of need, economic opportunity, education, healthcare, and community engagement. And so, to be eligible to apply for Patterson Family Foundation grant, you've got to be a 501(c)(3) organization or school district or a government entity. So, those are really the three areas that they target. And they've been very generous in Miami County, in school districts in the past. And again, with this grant, it's a $100,000 grant, the district was awarded over a four-year period, starting last year being year one, with the needs of creating more teachers or getting current employees correctly licensed for the position that they're in. It's called their teacher pipeline grant. And those funds, the district has been using to try to do just that. Find holes that we have and try to fill them with certified teachers and assist in that process. And we do that with great need. You've seen my reports, especially in the areas of special education and the number of our instructors that we're using and trying to get those people to move over to licensed staff. And so, when we looked at, you know, what to do with the money, we decided that we would give out grants up to $8,000 per year to assist with tuition reimbursement. And we also have the employee tuition reimbursement program that's $900 per year. So, almost $9,000 per year that we could give an individual. And that number came about from just a little bit of research of, you know, what is a working employee, what are they able to take on in a year, what are they going to spend? And it's roughly about $2,500 or so per semester. And that's about six hours. So, it's pretty expensive for those employees to take that on. And they get typically three semesters in, fall, spring, and summer. And that was kind of our goal to get out there. If you do the math there, it's not a lot of people. $10,000 seems like a lot, but you start dividing it by 8,000 per year per person. And some of these programs will take them two to four years to finish. So, we can go through that money very quickly. And so, we had to prioritize where are we going to spend that money, where should we look to first? And so, we kind of did some levels. So, level one, highest need priority, those are positions within one of our four buildings where we had a hole. We had a position that was open or we had a position that was wrongly licensed, or we needed to produce the right license for that person. And that was level one. Level two was similar, but within the co-op, okay? Within the co-op itself, do we have holes? And that's where most of our holes right now exist. They're in the co-op districts, they're at Hillsdale, they're at Lake Mary. We need to get more certified staff members to fill in there on the special education side. And then really, in that level two, we started to notice that, and I'll talk about this here in a second, that we broke that down into kind of two different levels, call it 2A, 2B. 2A were special education programs that had the ability to serve all the districts. Those are special day programs like Level and Life Skills and the Lake Mary program. So, any district can utilize that, any district can have a student in one of those programs. 2B was special education teachers in positions that were serving just that district. So, what we call interrelated teachers. So, they're serving students in that district, but they're not going to serve a student from another district. Then level three was let's just create teachers, paraprofessionals, other employees who want to go get a teaching degree, a teaching license, and are working in a pathway to do that. But we don't currently have them in a position, you know, they're not in a position and waiting. We're just trying to create more licensed teachers because there's a need everywhere for teachers. And level four was our staff, our 368 employees, were just looking to add a license to their current license, but it wasn't a need. We didn't have a position for them. They were just trying to add something. And then level five was the same thing, but with the co-op employees adding to the license. So, last year, being the first year, we got sort of a little late with the way that the grant funds were released. So, we funded for the spring and the summer of the 2024, 2025 school year. And we had eight applications that came in. We funded five of those applications. And that was all level one and all level two applications that came in were funded. And we ended up spending $14,500 and a little bit over that. So, not a lot spent there. We did give one of those employees to a fully licensed position. So, out of those five that we funded, one finished the program and had the license there. The other four, they still have more coursework to do. So, going to this year with a growing need in special education, teaching positions, we expected more applications to come in. And we received 17 applications for this year. Of those 17, we funded 11. And that was all level one and level 2A. We really didn't get to level 2B this year like we did last year. If we would have funded every application that came in, we would have expended the remaining $80,000 that roughly had left. That's kind of what the need was. So, we're estimating right now to spend about $45,000 this year in tuition reimbursement, which will leave us around $40,000 for the remaining two years of the program. And by the end of the year, fingers crossed, we're expecting to have five English as a second language certifications completed. One employee who has enough hours to be able to teach Ford Scott dual enrollment classes, that's also important. So, we can teach those classes and our students can earn credit there. We'll have one social worker going from the bachelor's level to a master's level, which opens up to more of what they can do in the building. And then three K-12 sped. And so, those are going to be your teachers who may be licenser in something else, but they're teaching sped. So, maybe they're elementary and now they're teaching sped and they're on a waiver. They can only stay on the waiver if they complete their master's program. Don't complete their master's program, they lose that special education licensure. So, if we get three of those done and then adding one, elementary education unified, meaning they're both elementary certified and sped certified. And that would be kind of a pair into a teacher role there. And we have six other alley instructors that are currently working on programs right now. They're kind of targets for us down the road of, you know, can we look at some of the remaining funding? We're also looking at, we talked about concurrent enrollment, that's another target area. We want to make sure we continue to offer those college classes through Ford Scott. And to do that, you need a master's in something, then 18 hours in your content area of masters or graduate coursework. Well, that's kind of hard to find for some of those, so those content areas. And we also just pointed out, we have several other local districts here in the area of Lewisburg and Prairie View that also received funding. And they are helping with their teachers too. And in some cases, they are helping fund tail employees, but who work in their district, who are in similar situations. So, a great program. The Patterson Family Foundation has been a great partner for education, not only with this grant, but in past grants the district has had, past grants at other communities, other school districts around us have also. So, happy to answer any questions you have. You'll see more information as we go throughout the year in my board report of what's going on.
So, the levels that we have here, are those the same as they're using in Lewisburg and Prairie View, or did they develop their own criteria for how they award their money?
That is our, our criteria. They will develop their own. Like, for instance, it might be first come, first served in some other districts.
Any other questions? Thanks, Justin. All right. So, for the board, just information items, special meeting, we will be meeting at Sunflower on the 16th. I believe that's next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, a week from tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. That'll be just an hour long like it was for Cottonwood. So, we'll meet there at 8 o'clock. Awesome. Okay. Next on the agenda, we don't have any open forums, so we'll move right on to action items. The first thing on our action item list is to consider the approval of city appeal and neighborhood revitalization plan interlocal agreement. Matt?
Yeah, so with us this evening, Randy Shan, our city manager, our mayor, and then Mitch Gabbard. So, they're here to help answer questions and so forth. So, I'm going to give a short snippet, but basically, the reason this is before you is anytime there's a, an interlocal agreement or a potential tax program, and this one rebate program, this body, last time we had something different, but similar, was with the Tiff district where the new Casey's and Scooters, that area is and so forth. Anytime there's programs like this, the different taxing entities have to give their approval. And so... And so in this case, this Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, Randy actually had sent that information, so it's all included on the Board Doc's website. It's a program that started back in two thousand four, is up for renewal. And my understanding is that the city obviously has approved it, and then the county has also approved it. But they have come tonight to, A, if there's anything you all want to say, but they're here to answer questions because we want to make sure that those questions are answered and so forth. So Randy, I don't know, is it you that's talking?
Unfortunately.
Thanks for coming.
Again, Randy Shannon, City of Paola. Mitch Gabbard is our administrator, so if I look over, he's my fact checker. He's very intelligent, more intelligent than I am. And yes, Mayor House is here with me. So the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, what we like to call the NRP because it's a mouthful. So it's, the easiest way to explain it is it is a property tax rebate program for improvements on a property in a designated district. So it's not the entire city. The district that is actually currently designated is more of the western part of Paola. So it goes as far east as Maple, and then it goes as far north as Baptiste, and it just kind of goes south. Those are kind of some interesting lines because it's not a perfect square, but that's the farthest points I can give you. The boundary is only within the City of Paola. It was never part of the growth area, and it stays, it ends at Bull Creek Bridge. So it ends right there. So the property tax rebate is not on all the property taxes. It's only on the marginal increase that you get from doing the improvements. So I think that's kind of lost a lot when we talk about this program, so I just want to make sure that that was noted. Let's see here. So yes, the county approved it on, on... Wednesday. Thank you. Last Wednesday, the council approved it, so this is our final step. So we're here, like Matt said, to answer any questions I knew might have for us.
I'll start off.
Go for it.
So it started in two thousand four. It's a ten-year program. So it ran in two thousand fourteen. What happened after two thousand fourteen?
Sure. Okay, so it's important to note that the plan is still intact. There's no changes to the plan. The plan is fine. It's the interlocal agreements that expired. So, yes, so in two thousand fourteen, the interlocal agreements with the school district in Miami County did expire due to the fact that they continued to utilize. They were still essentially valid. It was brought to our attention by the new appraiser this year that, hey, you might want to line that out just to, you know, make sure everything shakes out. So that's why we're here.
Gotcha. So it's been, like, people have been applying for new rebates?
Yes.
Past the agreement period? Like, the agreed upon, the initial agreed upon?
Yes, yes. Rebates are still being issued to this day, if that answers your question. Yes.
How many current rebates are there?
So there are eleven active. The entire plan since two thousand four has had fourteen commercial, thirty residential uses. So about forty-four total in twenty-one years. So it's not heavily used.
Were the residential rental properties or owned by those?
So we asked the county for that information. So also, I think it's important to note that the county administers a plan. All we do is give the building permit, and the county has all this information. So I want to thank my county appraisers office because the amount of work they had to do for us was a lot. So they definitely worked their butts off for us today. They were not able to tell us exactly the ratio for that. They were asking the county clerk, but I am not sure. All I know is that there were fourteen commercial and thirty residential uses.
Just from the looks of the information they gave us, it was, we can tell certain property owners are the same ones. It's about half and half, it looks like, on rentals and on occupancies.
Has the number increased that are using the rebate as when it started in two thousand four? Or have you seen a decline in that or an increase?
Oh, absolutely decline. And that's mainly because of staff's fault. Unfortunately, we have, we're small. So it's usually under the planned apartment, which is one person. And so when that person leaves, the institution always leaves. So we have had to pick it up, which is why, number one, it expired and we didn't realize in the first place. And why it hasn't been utilized or promoted as it should.
Has there been discussion of expanding the boundaries of it and allowing other residents and commercial properties to take advantage of it?
I would love to. I would love that. That would be my ultimate goal. But that takes a lot of time and effort and staff bandwidth that we don't have right now. So we'd like to just kind of keep as is, so people can keep utilizing until we have the time to be able to do that.
Are there any currently in the last three years that have been issued refund?
Yes. So actually, I went back and I found that for this last year, so we get the disbursement notice every June, in that we don't see the money. The county just tells us, hey, this is what we gave out. It was one thousand three hundred dollars.
Is the city supposed to maintain the fund?
No, county maintains the fund.
The legislation states the city is supposed to create the fund. But that one, anyway, because...
No, you're fine. We created it with the county, so the county maintains everything. We don't see anything. The county takes it.
The tax forms should zero on each one for the last three years. That's what I was asking.
Jimmy actually has our last two years' numbers.
So our information that we get from Miami County, they list the NRP amounts on there. So last year for us, total everything, even rec. commission was eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. And corresponding interest, our bonds are now paid off. So just the LOB and capital, last year was six hundred and sixty dollars. So I have that data for the last two years now, with the new system of the county, so.
What was that, six?
Six hundred and sixty dollars for LOB and capital.
So when this was originally initiated in two thousand four, was it meant to bring businesses in or keep businesses here?
That's a very good question. The original intent was actually to try to revitalize dilapidation. So the goal is to have a long-term mechanism to help with property valuation increases. So essentially, you can think about, if you want to essentially update your home, you want new windows and new siding and a roof. The first thing you think of is, oh, gosh, I'm not going to be able to afford the taxes when I do that. Well, this is for that. It's a rebate on that marginal increase that tears it out. So that way, people will update their homes. It's really what this incentive is for. Now, yes, it is, it can be used for commercial, and I think a lot of people go towards downtown. It can be used to update those downtown buildings and help with that as well. So it's kind of a two-fold.
Is there a specific business currently that's wanting it, and that's why you're renewing it?
There have been businesses that have utilized it off and on.
Is there one that's currently applied for or planning to apply for that they can't receive the approval?
There's eleven active users. So yes, there are multiple businesses and residential that are currently under it, yes.
So Taylor Ford is or is not one of them?
Is, yes.
How much would that increase be for the refund?
An increase of what?
How much would the refund be based on how much they add into their building?
So that would be from Miami County Appraiser Office. They would have to figure that out. But if they are continuing to get what they are getting, it wouldn't be a huge burden on the city. I'm not sure about the school district, but.
That's not, that's not one of the numbers they provided us in their report.
And they, yeah, that would be their own calculation they'd have to do.
Out of curiosity, can you tell me the last time that the city voted to stay revenue neutral?
Sure. We have not been revenue neutral since revenue neutral came out.
I guess I kind of struggle. If the city hasn't been revenue neutral, we have been trying to help the tax burden, and that's not been across the board. But being part of a business owner and seeing the lack of infrastructure, and what feels like a lack of progress forward in bringing new business in, or even having, and outside of this line, having processes and hoops to jump through to have businesses that are currently here to move their business forward, to bring in tax revenue. It's a struggle for me to want to take money away from the district while it being small. If it does expand, I feel like it could be more. And so I personally kind of struggle with, with that.
And I think my personal struggle with it is the fact that thirty-eight percent of what the refund is comes from the school district. And not giving us the number or knowing what to expect makes it really difficult for budgeting purposes.
Okay, so I will just say how the city does it is that, I believe one of your questions was how does the city budget for the revenue loss? We don't consider it a revenue loss at all. We consider a defer of property valuation increases. So we don't see that money, and I believe you guys mentioned the same way the city does. The budget is based on estimations. So we don't essentially have that in consideration with our budget. When it's not there, we don't have anything to lose. Does that make sense? If you're budgeting based on increases, I'm budgeting based on what the previous year was. I'm not considering the increases, so therefore, I'm not losing anything.
You're budgeting based on the mill levy on the assessment.
I'm budgeting based on the evaluation, estimated evaluation that I get from the county. And even then, I don't, we don't always receive what the estimation is. So we do our best to make it work what we have.
Wouldn't it just make sense to, I mean, maybe look at staying revenue neutral to help kind of everybody's taxes out instead of focusing on, I mean, what made you pick, maybe you weren't part of the original, but I mean, this particular area?
So I think we're kind of mixing two conversations. We're mixing revenue neutral, and we're mixing neighborhoodization property taxes, which was done in two thousand four, which is way before revenue neutral was even a thing. So in two thousand four, this district was, I believe, was chosen, from what I can look back on the most, was to help with light. Like we said before, the original intent was to help with light, to help have an incentive to help build up those property values. That's what the original district was.
By giving tax rebates, correct.
On the marginal increase, yes.
Right.
Yes.
So it's still a tax rebate, but, I mean, so in reference to revenue neutral, I'm just saying, helping out with tax breaks to people, period. So I understand what you're saying with the NRA or NRP. I just, gosh, yeah, that's where I started on too.
You know, it's not my job to defend this. It was my job to educate, and that's what I'm here for. So if there's any questions in regards to the plan, I'm more than happy to answer those. But as far as defending the plan, I don't really have much for you other than the education piece that I can provide. Unfortunately, I don't think any of us were in here when this plan was drafted, modified, or the legislation to allow it.
Does in high school.
I think one way to, to look at this is, and I didn't realize until the letter was shared regarding the Jackson Hotel. I think, in my mind, that would be an example of a building that was potentially going to be torn down, or it was sitting there or so. If you take, and I'm not trying to oversimplify this, but if you just look at that building as an example, so that building, if it, if it would have been torn down, would have been, I mean, the vacant ground wouldn't have been on the tax roll, right? But, but as, so some money was given up, short term, that we wouldn't have seen tax-wise. But now that it's, it's been there, it's ruled off, or I believe it's ruled off, then the amount of money coming in via property tax, and then because there's a business sales tax-wise and so forth, is where you get the, you know, that's, there's the benefit of. And then, and then trying to help refurbish, in this case, a historic building in the community. So I think that's one way to look at it, not trying to sway one way or the other. But that's, I mean, that's, that's, in my mind, that was, that's a way to look at it. Similar, when the Tiff District was brought up, you know, the amount of money that we got from that, different scenario, right, but because it was zoned agriculture, was very, very minimal. So that really hasn't changed right now, but as that comes off, off that program, then we will have, have the benefit of that. I guess the only other thing is, and I don't know as far as the program is helping with that or not, is if this allows someone to maintain a residence, or, you know, I guess would probably be more than it, getting more, maybe it's not livable or what have you. But that's where I see the potential benefit of a program like that. It's a short term. We're giving up something short term, but for maybe a long-term benefit. Not just from a taxing entity, but from, I mean, a way to help homeowners or whatever.
I would agree with that.
I'm not trying to debate it, just as an idea.
And the logic behind it, and that makes sense. But the issue that I see is that after the refund time was up with that, and the city and the school districts and the county were started to receive the full amount of property tax, not one taxing, not one taxing jurisdiction decided to reduce taxes. Or, and that, so the homeowners did not see the benefit of it.
I feel like that's, I feel like that's kind of invalid, it's a twenty-five-year program, and you can't really gauge it on that.
I was just saying, the Jackson, I was specifically referring to the Jackson.
Okay, I was going to say, even though that's hard to gauge too, because it's a tiered system. It's not a hundred percent for ten years. So you, you can't, just because the evaluations of a city increase by, let's just say, a hundred thousand, you can't narrow it down to just because it was the Jackson. So I don't know how you would properly gauge that.
Because it is fifty percent of the cost, or of what the increase is based on.
No, I don't understand how you would gauge that we didn't lower taxes because of that.
Because the taxes were not impacted by it?
In general. Like, you don't know if we lowered the mill or not. That's what I'm trying to do as a city.
Well, the mill has nothing to do with this property taxes. It does, but it's an equation, and actually isn't what the property taxes end up being. So you can still lower the mill and raise property taxes. But, so for example, Taylor Ford. If it's because of the amount of work that they've done on their building, and they had already expected this to come in, my estimate would be about forty thousand dollars in a refund. That is basically eight dollars for every taxpayer on every average-priced home. So unless it's going to go down eight dollars on their side, and you, if you don't see what your, the rebate, you don't see it paying off. I really, I mean, taxes have gone...
If you don't know the end though, if you don't know the end result, then I don't understand how you don't see, like, how you could gauge that properly. But that's okay. That, you know, that's okay. I'm not here to debate. That's fine. I, we can agree to disagree on that one. But are there any other questions in regards to the NRP? I'm more than happy to answer.
And just another thing, just to kind of touch on what Matt said. This is also, it might not be known, this is also for new construction and infill lots and all of those sections. So another house bill is a broader tax base, which, yes, it's small, but helps it spread out a little bit. This can also be passed along to the potential homebuyer. So it helps attract home builders who can then, who can apply for it while they own the house. And then the homeowner, the buyer within the platform as well, and then they can continue receiving those benefits. So it helps attract home builders and more people moving to these areas, which broadens the tax base, which helps everybody out.
Are there a lot of...
As I said, is that working? Do we have any data, like, over the last ten years, whether it's actually done that or not?
Well, and as Randy said, like, so I've been in my position for a year now, drinking out of a fire hose.
Yeah.
Just in that year, I've been approached by two home builders, one out of Ottawa, and I think one from up in the city. Just in that year, I've been approached by two homebuilders, one out of Ottawa and I think one from up in the city, who actually brought up neighborhood revitalization plans that they use in Ottawa and elsewhere. And that was a, a big factor in whether they wanted to come here and build, was if they could pass that along to a, a homebuyer as an incentive. Help them have buyers get homes sold really quick, so they're not sitting on houses, helps us get houses filled and infill lots filled.
I think across the board, that's a huge need in the community, is just being able to get the word out, and, and, I mean, it's great if people are using it and we're getting new things in the community, and and that's why I was asking whether it's been successful or not.
Yeah, yeah, and again, like I said, this is all kind of new for each city plan that's came along. So, in the last few months, when this has been brought out, I've learned more than I've learned in the last five years about it. So, it, it is something that I would plan on passing along all to, all homebuilders, especially ones that are interested in those infill lots. We've got several of them in the, it's not like big homebuilders building out whole communities, it's just a small, here and there. And it, it would help them, though I do plan on pushing this more to them.
How many lots would you say are, like, empty and available for new homes?
In this area?
Yeah.
Just as a rough guess, don't quote me on anything, I'm gonna say ten to fifteen, just to kind of, as a guess from what I've looked at on the maps. And, and like I said, in the future, if we have the resources to broaden that and redo the plan to where it's across town, that number obviously grows. But yeah, that's just for new builds, a lot of the problem in this area though is these houses are getting so blighted and just in bad shape from being vacant, sitting for so long, that they need to be torn down, and we've got, we've had a couple of them the last couple of years that would have utilized this if, if we would have pushed it out, that tore a house down and built a new one, so.
Do you think that there's people who don't take advantage of it because of the fear of the price it will cost them once the rebate is over?
I don't, I think a lot of people that have missed out on it, so to say, just haven't known about it.
Lack of knowledge, sure.
And I'm not saying, yeah, I agree, I believe that's probably part of it, but I think, I think there, I, I would venture to guess that some people just wouldn't take advantage of it because the process isn't worth what you get out of it, yes, it's a rebate, but, you know, is the work to put into it worth the time and the effort to do it? And then on the end of the rebate, yes, you've been rebated, you know, for ten years, at whatever percentage, but in that time, you know, over ten years, at some point, you're, you're about, your valuations have gone up. And so, you know, you make your house really nice, and now you're taxed out of it.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that this is not unique to us. You can just do a quick search, and there's Topeka that has it, there's Alatha, there's Osawatomie, there's Pittsburgh, there's Andover, like, it, it is so widespread because it has a lesser impact than, say, constitutional tax payment, which is a hundred percent tax payment for, gosh, up to twenty years. We don't, no, like, absolutely not, so it has a little lesser impact, but it's also something in our toolbox, something that we do have, we say, hey, we can't give you everything, but we can give you this, so it's just kind of more of a, kind of something in our arsenal, essentially, is what we can give. We can't give you all, but, yeah, we can blow you some pie, here you go.
What does the application process look like?
So, it is. Let's see here. When you apply, you get this whole little packet, and so it tells you step by step on what to do. But mainly, you come to Payle City Hall and you get a building permit, you take that and you go to the county appraisal's office, and they help you fill out the application because you cannot start before you start the application process, because they'll have nothing to gauge. They won't be able to tell what your property was before you did the increases.
Sure.
So, that is why the county appraisal's, Miami County gets a seven point five percent of the rebate, because they administer the plan for us. So, we, we lucked out, saying, here's your building permit, here's your application, please go see county appraisal, and they sit with them and go through all the calculations and help them with it.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's a good little teamwork we got going on.
And I'm not sure where I read it, but I was under the understanding that vacant lots were not included.
So, I believe in the original plan, vacant lots are not included, but demolition and then rebuild it, does that make sense?
Does that make sense, so it has to have the real property on, still there?
Yes.
And then you can demolish it and then rebuild new, that would be qualified, yes ma'am?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Action for considering the approval of city appellate NRP in our local agreement. Need a motion for the agreement.
I will make the motion to approve, consider the approval of the city appellate neighborhood revitalization plan in our local agreement.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor? Four, four, all opposed? Four, three.
Thank you for coming to answer this.
Thank you so much.
You're more welcome to stay.
All right, next, approve the PMS section one roof bid with Jimmy.
Yeah, so back in April when we presented Cap Latley, as we do all these things that come out for bids, this is the roof pitch. So our roof consultant through Trimco does the walkthrough, we had the bid opening last week, see all the results in there for that, there were six bids received, and this is for that mid-school roof section I that was budgeted in Cap Latley. And it was budgeted at, I gotta get back my board report here, this is all on the public comment. Five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars was the budget, and again, that's the labor and the materials, what you're appearing tonight is only the labor. The materials is purchased through Trimco, through Rebusch Purchasing Cooperative, which is in the information there, but the labor bids are the five roofing companies that bid in there, and the low bid was American Roofing, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. They've done work in the district before previously. So that plus the materials estimate, which is roughly a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, the total project would be around three hundred and forty-six, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, so a little bit under budget. A couple of the comments I've put in my report that the roof consultant highlighted, you know, we do the infrared scans and they do all the testing of the roofs. None of this had wet, which when it has to be torn out, what's more expensive, kind of like parking lot, you can resurface rather than. So, the roof is in really good condition, and in general, all of our roofs are well-maintained, and so this replacement is about a third of the cost if we had to complete tear off and do a brand-new roof, so actually comes out more advantageous, so in the long run. So, questions you have on roofs?
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to approve PMS section I roof bid? Second, motion and second, all those in favor? Last on the agenda is considering the approval of the FBLA National Conference Trip.
So, this trip for FBLA, we have Tate Schumard here, he is the FBLA sponsor. This trip would be similar to the FFA trip that, that, that student organization takes. Normally, when we have like longstanding trips and so forth, they don't come to the board because they're, they're longstanding, I'll say, traditional trips. So, FFA, a trip to state for, you know, one of our teams makes it to the state and so forth, because this is, would be new. I asked Mr. Schumard if he would put together the proposal and so forth, so, and he did a nice job of that with the itinerary and so forth. I do not want to speak for him, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, but some of this, so you may look at it and go, okay, hey, we've got number of rooms, and then chaperone and so forth, I think potentially a lot of the, the people are female. And so, I think it's, your wife has agreed, so, because Mr. Schumard, if they're female, his wife has agreed to, to go, to, to, to be a female chaperone on that trip too, so we have the sponsor, and so we appreciate her volunteering her time for that, but he has the, kind of the itinerary out, and so he is here, anything you would like to, to mention, he's here to answer questions and so forth. And then, of course, Mr. Hines can, can answer any questions here, but, but we are, we are in favor of it, anytime we can give kids more opportunities and, you know, and Mr. Schumard's done a nice job of really trying to build FBLA back up. We had some program kind of, you know, died down a little bit, wasn't as involved, and, and he's really doing a nice job of getting it, getting it back, back going again.
When was the last time a trip like this was made for FBLA?
So, we went to a regional version of it a couple of years ago, I took three students down to Dallas. So basically what it is, is, this one is a two-day, two-and-a-half-day event, that's like an optional thing you can do on Thursday, we would get there Thursday, depending on time, we might do it, but essentially, there's like an opening session to get kind of people excited about the whole concept, there's people from all, so there's only one this year, so we, the, one we went to in Dallas was regional, so it was a little bit smaller, this is the, a new thing, a national conference, so anybody with an FBLA chapter is invited, and it's a pretty popular event. So we have our opening session, and then we break off into workshops, and so it's a little bit customizable for the student in that regard, there's some individual type things, and then there's also, I'm taking my officers, so there's also like team and chapter building type skills and things of that nature, and the intent is for them to not only become better individuals and, and leaders themselves, but also they come back and create a better chapter, like Mr. Meek said, we're trying to grow it and, and bring it back to something that's at a higher level. So this is mostly just a leadership-type thing, there's some little, like, mini competitions and stuff like that, like the one in Dallas, they had like a Shark Tank-type competition, where they had to come up with a business idea and they're given like rough outline of a proposal, and in twenty minutes have to come up with a pitch and compete for investors. Is, there's that piece of it, the more formal competition piece happens a little bit later in the year, and based on qualification and stuff like that, we'd have another discussion, like this is kind of like a trial run of that sort of thing, mostly focused on leadership. So we went to original one in Dallas a couple of years ago, and that was awesome, the kids really enjoyed it. One of our team members, Alexis, who is now our president, she actually won, she was on the winning team of the Shark Tank thing with like two thousand eight hundred participants, her team of five won, so it's, it's really cool, and then there's a lot of time to like, obviously, network and interact with different entities like that, internship opportunities, they're all older, four of them are seniors, so they've got decisions to make, so there's that element as well, and all across the two-day conference, there's just different social elements, workshops, leadership, speakers, things of that nature, so it's a pretty busy time, but they enjoy it.
I personally would love to see FBLA turned into kind of what Mr. Hines has turned FFA into, which is amazing, so.
Yeah.
And it's great.
And if you want to stay up till eleven o'clock?
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
Take all the doors.
No, 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 not me.
Eleven is early, you're gonna stay up as the sponsor.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You gotta step past eleven and make sure they don't sneak out when it's eleven o'clock.
I think it's a great idea to give any type of real-world experience like this.
It's a, it's a yearly thing, so it would be one of those things that, assuming it goes well, it makes it become pretty routine, so we don't have to make a big doo-doo out of it, but.
I think it's great too, thank you for doing it.
Cool.
Okay, can I get a motion to, for the approval of the FBLA National Conference Trip? Second. Motion and second, all those in favor? Seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
All right, need a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and second, all those in favor? Seven oh. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate you.
Thanks, everybody.